I don't know, are y'all getting set up? People are getting set up?
We certainly don't.
Okay.
It's our frustration statement.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the December State Board of Education meeting today. It's a busy time of year. I know educators and staff here at the department are working hard and appreciate all you do. We will start with a moment of silence. Thank you. We're going to start first this morning with the School Board Member Recognition Month. We have thousands probably of school board members, y'all could tell us, across the state that serve their local districts and do a great public service to our state. Here we have Travis Warren, a school board member from Farmington, and an ASBA board member to present the resolution. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Whereas, the quality of education continues to be a cornerstone of our state's prosperity and a key driver of Arkansas's future success. And whereas, education forms the foundation for the future of our children and the growth and advancement of our society as a whole. And whereas, Arkansas remains steadfast in its commitment to providing its more than four hundred and seventy-five thousand public school students with the highest quality education available. And whereas, the dedicated members of Arkansas School Board serve as the vital connection between the community and the classroom, ensuring that the needs of the students are met and that the interests of families are represented. And whereas, these public servants, elected by their local communities, tirelessly advocate for policies and practices that prioritize student success, offering their time, expertise, and judgment without compensation. And whereas, the Arkansas School Boards Association and the Arkansas State Board of Education collaborate to support and guide the state's more than one thousand five hundred locally-elected school board official, uh, members who make a critical contribution to public education. And whereas, the month of January provides an opportunity to honor and express appreciation for Arkansas School Board members recognizing the significant time, energy, and talent they invest in service to our schools and communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Arkansas State Board of Education hereby recognizes and salutes the members of local school boards of education by proclaiming the month of January twenty twenty-five as Arkansas School Board Member Recognition Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Thank you for coming in. And we have Ms. Tammy Rettenger here as well. I know that you all are doing your conference this week, so you have a lot of people here in Little Rock. I wish you all the best of luck as you do that and appreciate your service to the state. Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Saracini to come to present.
Good morning, Chair, Board, Secretary Oliva. This morning, we're going to celebrate our first kind of non-traditional administrator license, and I am so excited. When I first brought this to Deputy Smith, Act seven thirty-two, this last legislative session, and learns kind of opened up the flexibility, and we're excited. We currently have and had ha- and have we've had the PPTL, which is a provisional professional teaching license for a long time, where if you're someone in a profession, medical profession, and you would like to teach in a school, there is a route for you go- and not having to go back to school. But we've never had this for administrators. And so lots of times, we get administrators that may already have their doctorate, and it's really hard for us to say, you've got to go back and do this, this, and this, because there's really not a pathway. And so we have made a pathway for those who already have a master's or above degrees that focus on leadership. And so today, we're going to recognize our first recipient of a provisional pathway for administrators, and that is Dr. Tran. And he is the Southern Region Superintendent for Friendship Education Foundation and Superintendent for the Marble Lane School District. And he is the first educator to complete this program. So today, we want to recognize him as being our first, and he's worked really hard. And so today, we are going to give him his teaching, our, his administrator license. Exciting.
First, I just want to say thank you to the Department of Education, Ms. Caris- uh, Ms. Carly Saracini, Deputy Commissioner Stacy, because they've been instrumental in helping myself and everybody else to get what they need to get, and especially for the students. I don't know what else to say, but thank you so much with everything.
Congratulations. And I'm glad that you're able to celebrate this, because hopefully there's others listening that are going to start asking you questions to see what your pathway was and, and what you learned along the way. But it's amazing that the state has opened this up to support that.
Yes.
Comments?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate you. The six, you know, when I first met you, I was asking that question.
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, are you certified, all those things? And I'm going to follow suit, because I was one of those teachers that wanted to get into administration, had a master's, that had all the qualifications, except the additional requirement, and so I chose not to. So I'm thrilled that the state is figuring out that flexibility and getting folks that not only want to be in the role, but are qualified, exactly what they need. And so this is one of those examples where instead of saying, ooh, no, we can't do that, we said, what do you need from us to get that done? So I'm thrilled, and I'm thrilled that it's you. So congratulations.
No, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So Dr. Tran, I just want to say congratulations. I know when we talk about the work that our state has done and our board has done with implementing Arkansas learns, there's so many different provisions that focus on empowering parents and raising teacher salaries and early learning and literacy. But one of the little pieces that was put into that robust, comprehensive education reform bill was the ability to external operators and partner with struggling districts in an innovative way that we've never engaged in as a state. And I know this board, many of you were, were on this board when we were doing board meetings in Marble Lane, and it was a dire situation. And the friendship group came in and said, we, we want to, we want to see how this works. And kind of went out and led the, the charge of reimagining how we support struggling schools. And you were right there as a practitioner and expert from day one, and walked into what I would consider a dire situation. And it really just changed the belief in the community and the expectation that students can learn and providing opportunities for them to excel. And the, the, the journey's not complete, but you're making a, a, a lot of progress, and we're really proud of all, what you have taken on to make this happen. So congratulations.
No, thank you for that. And just to give you an up, an update, I sent this to Deputy Stacy and Ms. Sheila. We had a partner who visited Marble Lane, and after the visit, they sent an email to the principal. And if you don't mind, I want to read to you just a little bit of a snippet of what they saw at Marble Lane. If I could get it. Oh, here it is. So I'm gonna omit some names, because, you know, uh, uh, trying to keep the privacy. But this is from John Allison, who is a, a partner of us in helping us doing mathematics over at Marble Lane. He said, when he visited the school, I really enjoyed my visit to your school today. Thank you for welcoming me. It was great watching the teacher with her students. She was, has very high expectations and insists that her students learn and learn correctly. I told the teacher that I have been in a lot of schools, different schools this year, and your students are well above many students all over the state in ability. They also better behave and more respectful than students in many of the schools where I have been. I also noticed from your morning announcements and overall appearance of the school that high expectations are not limited to the classroom. It is the overarching culture of your school. I've taught in schools that climb from the depths to unforeseen heights, and I've taught in schools that crash from great heights to the lowest part of a dark valley. What set them apart was expectations. I always believed that high expectations are a necessary foundation for school improvement. From what I saw today, you certainly have that foundation.
That's amazing. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for the work that you're doing, um, here in Marble Lane and across the state. And congratulations again. Thank you. Yes, we'll take a picture with you and your new certification.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, are there any changes to the agenda? I don't believe I've heard any. Then we will get started on our action agenda. It's very short today. First, we have the Mountainburg School District request for a waiver. Ms. Worsham, thank you for coming today. And I'm remiss to not say Ms. Woods is on Zoom, so I'll be monitoring that if she has questions. And I believe is Mountainburg on Zoom as well?
No, they are here in person.
Oh, great. Thank you, Superintendent Atwell.
Well, good morning. Hope Worsham, Assistant Commissioner of Public School Accountability for the department. I am here to request a, present a waiver for standard one A five, which is class size, for the Mountainburg School District. They are requesting this for one year. The district did receive this same waiver last year for one year and are back this year requesting the same waiver. Superintendent Atwell is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the request.
Thank you. Superintendent, would you like to make your remarks? We appreciate you coming in today.
You're welcome. I appreciate your consideration in this manner. We want to welcome and accept any school choice or transfer request we get. But in a small district, it's hard to upstaff whenever our enrollment goes over a, a threshold. And so with fifty-two students in third grade in two sections, we feel that it's in the best interest of the students to avoid disruption. And we would have much difficulty in affording and staffing a position at this point in the year, so I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Board members, I'll go to my right first and ask for questions. To my left, questions?
Okay, I have a question. So this is the second year in a row that we're, that you're requesting a one-year waiver. Is, was last year's for the same cohort of students? I mean, are we just following them along?
No, ma'am. Last year's was third grade also, so those students are in the fourth grade now. And our numbers were at forty-eight at the end of the year, and through the enrollment and transfer request process, we ended at fifty-two. And we've held at that number this year.
So I, I also wonder about the timing of this, you know? And I understand that it would be difficult to make a hire at this point in the school year. But are we kind of like off, get off cycle in some way as far as looking at, at this need? Like, should we be talking about this in the summertime rather than in December? Does that make sense? I guess not.
No, I think that's
So I can address, and the school can, can request the waiver at any time period, and so we are always monitoring enrollment and when enrollment fluctuates, fluctuates. So I believe that the overage from our side, the first time we noticed, it was in September, which was after the school year started, and that's whenever Superintendent Atwell reached out to us with questions about requesting a waiver. But the district can request the waiver at any point throughout the school year. We did change the standards so that enrollment has to be based on, we, we check for ensuring that you're meeting the class size requirements as of the October one enrollment, so that they can better plan and maybe not have to have so many waivers throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Worsham, may I ask you a question while you're here? It was unclear to me, is this a standards waiver request or what we'd formally call an Act twelve forty waiver request?
So it is a standards waiver request. It's for that one particular standard and for the time period of one year.
Okay, and we've done this before for class size?
That is correct.
Why this type versus the Act twelve forty waiver?
There are different requirements for Act twelve forty waivers, one of them being the length of time that they're being requested for. And because these, we would anticipate that schools are able to staff accordingly, those, these have always been one-year waivers for that reason. It's just for the, the, the period of time to ensure that we can get staffing figured out and then maybe better plan for the next year.
Thank you. Board members, Ms. Hunter, questions? Mr. Wood?
Are, are the teachers okay with this?
Yes, sir. We have a building guiding coalition that meets and reviews, and they look at staffing recommendations. And I met with the teachers in question, and they felt like what they do for twenty-five, they can do for twenty-six.
Sure.
And it would be more disruptive to have those classes split and changed at this point.
Are, are the teachers offered more compensation?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you to do that, in my opinion.
Ms. Keener, Dr. Arnold, questions? Questions to my right?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Ms. Woods, questions? Apologize, I didn't get to. With that, any more remarks? Okay. With that, then if no more questions, the floor will be open for a motion?
So I'll move to approve the waiver.
There is a move to approve the waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for coming in today. Next, we will have Ms. James for a PLSB case that we have today.
Good morning. Whitney James with the department. This case is one that was on the consent agenda last month that was pulled for a review. We sent notice of today's review hearing to the educator and her attorney, and her attorney has indicated that neither she nor the attorney plan to appear today in person. So typically, we would swear in the educator, anybody speaking on her behalf that's not an attorney. Since she is not here, I can give you a quick overview of this case. This was an educator who was working as an intern or a pre-service teacher at the Bismarck School District. She admitted that she exchanged in the, that she exchanged inappropriate photographs with a student by a text message. Again, she was a pre-service teacher at the time, which is what brought her under the PLSB umbrella. The student was eighteen at the time the photographs were exchanged. The educator had code of ethics training in August of twenty twenty-three, and the exchange of photographs happened in November of twenty twenty-three. There were no criminal charges filed that we're aware of, because the student was eighteen, and I don't, we don't have any evidence that there was actual physical contact. And there was no true finding from DHS. The educator did self-report her actions in the exchange of photographs to her administrator after she received a threat from her boyfriend, if you don't tell them, I will type of thing. The recommendation from the Ethics Subcommittee was a level three public notification of ethics violation, which is the equivalent of suspension of license for three years, followed by a level two public notification, which is the equivalent of probation for two years, a five hundred dollar fine, training, reading, written reflections, and quarterly reports. The educator requested an evidentiary hearing and then withdrew that request to accept the recommendation of the Ethics Subcommittee. It went on the consent agenda, and then you all voted to pull it last month. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. James. Can you remind us, so even though the educator's not here, we will still have to take a vote today?
Yes, ma'am.
What is, and this is where we take three separate votes, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you walk us through those three?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And then we'll open up for discussion.
So there will be three separate motions, the first one being, did the educator violate the code of ethics? And if the educator did violate the code of ethics, what are the standards? And this one, we're talking about standards one and two. If the code of ethics was violated, we'll need a motion to accept or modify the recommendation of the Ethics Subcommittee. And then you will state what you wish for the sanction to be. And then the third motion is regarding the rationale. You can use the rationale of the Ethics Subcommittee or provide your own rationale, and I have that here if you'd like a refresher on what their rationale was. They did recommend the equivalent of suspension, so if you chose to modify the sanction, you might want to also modify the rationale. It's up to you.
Thank you. We'll start with questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can get to that. Mr. Henderson, Mr. Brad, questions? Okay. Mr. Allen's questions?
Can you explain to us what happens with a public notification?
Yes, ma'am. That would, that would be public in ALES, and it would, it would show, it would show suspension or revocation in ALES.
I'm not aware of what that is.
In the Arkansas Educator Licensor System, so anyone that looked up her name in that system would see that she has a sanction. And also, of course, we would have a, a state board order on our website.
Carly Saracini, just so you know, before
Carly Saracini, just so you know, before district hires, they are, it's in statute that they look within our system, and it will have a banner in red that says suspension or probation. And so it's very evident when you go to hire someone and they look it up in our system. And that's something that they are to do by law.
So that, that'll be up for three years, is that?
If there is, if there is, if the recommendation is suspension, that will be up for three years. And then there will be probation after that. So it'll be up for a minimum of five years if you accept the previous recommendation. Additionally, she will not be eligible to work in a school in any capacity while on suspension.
Ms. Hunter, questions?
So I always get confused on this. What about other states if she chose to attempt to work in another state?
Yes, ma'am. They would be able to see through NASDAQ that she has a suspension in Arkansas. Assuming that you want to accept the recommendation, you're always, you're free to modify the recommendation. But either way, whatever it is, if there's a sanction, other states would be able to see that.
More questions? Mr. Wood, questions?
How, how old was she when?
Early twenties, early twenties. The student was eighteen. She was completing her internship at the time that this occurred.
He was a senior?
He was a senior, yes.
And what were the natures of the, what was the nature of the photographs?
Nude photographs. The student, my understanding is that the student approached her, and they started texting and talking, and then they exchanged nude photographs. Each of them sent nude photographs.
Ms. Keener?
So the recommendation from the Subcommittee, I'm reading right now, and I want to be sure I get it right, was?
Yes, ma'am.
Suspension or can?
Yes, ma'am. The equivalent of suspension. She doesn't have a license, so we would call it level three public notification. Yes, ma'am.
So without a license, I guess what are you suspending? Her ability to be counted in ratios or, or tell me?
We're suspending that she cannot work in a public school or charter.
As opposed to, there's nothing to revoke, so that's?
And if she doesn't meet the criteria that set forth all of the, the fines and everything that the Subcommittee put forth, she will never be able to get her license till that is complete.
So this is such a unique situation because if this were, these were two adults in, somewhere in society outside of this power dynamic, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But because that dynamic was there and these standards, I believe, were violated, we'll vote on it in a minute. But it is, I still feel it's our duty to protect children that she could potentially interact with at a later date. And so I guess I'm not sure that, can we block something from getting a future license? Do you see what I mean? There's nothing to revoke. So I wanted to know what is perhaps a more severe statement that we could make as a board that this was unacceptable without, does that make sense?
You would have to do the level that's the equivalent of revocation.
Number four. Yes, ma'am. If she had a level four public notification, she would not be able to get her license for, at, right, she would not be able to get, she would not be able to get her license.
So she just becomes ineligible?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And can you tell me a little bit more about the rationale of the committee that decided on three as opposed to four when?
Yes, ma'am. So they did find that she violated standards one and two. They have listed that she was in her internship. Of course, they exchanged nude photographs. The student was eighteen years old. They thought that there was a low negative impact on the student. And that was based on what the parent had told the district, that we're fine with it, he's a grown boy, and we don't want to participate in the investigation or have anything to do with this. No evidence of physical contact, that interactions lasted one month. The parent of the student was not concerned regarding the interactions. The educator self-reported to her supervisor and took ownership of her actions. And then she knew or, I'm sorry, she should have known her actions violated the code of ethics. She had just had the, the code of ethics training in August.
So I guess the thing that I keep coming back to is the very clear sanctioning guidelines that had this been a licensed educator, regardless of age, based on their, the understood relationship between a teacher and a student, it would be revocation. I mean, that's as clear as day. So I guess what I'm leaning towards is that, I'll get my notes, that we, that we vote that standards one and two were violated, that we would modify it to that level four with the rationale of just simply the guidelines that are here. That would be my thought.
Dr. Keener addressed my questions and concern and summarized what I was hoping to accomplish as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Woods, questions by you? Thank you, Dr. Arnold. Okay.
Can I ask?
Yeah, certainly.
So did you say that this exchange happened for one month? It wasn't a one-time thing?
It was more than one text message. And I don't, I don't believe it lasted. The relationship in, in total probably lasted about one month. I don't really know how long. We didn't have the text messages. She did admit that she exchanged, but there were multiple text messages.
May I ask questions along that? So sometimes we do get the text messages. Why were they not received in this case?
I am, I am not sure. I don't know if they had been deleted by the time that she, that she came forward to the school. But she did, she did self-report, but her, her romantic partner or, I don't know if it was her boyfriend, found out about the text messages and told her, you know, you, if you don't report this, you know, there, you know, there will be a consequence. And at that point, she came forward. They likely were deleted. And again, you know, the, the students' parents did not want to cooperate or provide anything. Yes, and DHS did not pick this up because he was eighteen, and there wasn't any evidence of a physical relationship.
But without text messages, there's a vacuum of information. More questions, board members?
One other thing I'm concerned with is the absence of their presence today, either her or her lawyer. Was there a rationale given? Just, how, I suppose, did they reach out and go, "We're not interested"? Or, you know, what was the exchange like?
We did send the hearing notice, and we reached out just for our purposes to find out, you know, is she going to appear, just so we're prepared. And her attorney responded that they did not plan to appear.
Says a lot.
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, just to clarify, with regards to the recommendations, is it talking three years or five?
It would be three years of the equivalent of suspension, followed by two years of the equivalent of probation for the Subcommittee's recommendation. If it is a level, if you vote to give a level four public notification, that's the equivalent of a permanent revocation. She would not be able to get her license or work in a public school or charter.
Any more questions or comments? Ms. Woods, I'll check in with you again. Okay. Mr. Brad?
Yes, sir.
According to the timeline, she, she went through ethics training in August, and then this occurred not long after that?
Yes, our office provided ethics training to her class at the university in August.
Are there specific instances in ethics training? I, I just don't understand how somebody could go through ethics training.
One of our investigators was at that training, and she said that they spent over an hour on standard one and inappropriate interactions with students.
I would like to address that we are flipping our, redoing our training because I don't think that one time is enough, that it needs to be embedded in the program. So as we are making tweaks to our state review for our ed prep programs, we're now going to put that part in our state review as one of the standards and that we can pull data to look to see investigations from which EPP because it needs to be embedded and not just a one-time and you're done, because that's what we're seeing. And we just met last week, brainstormed, and hopefully, we will be able to update you in the next month or two and reveal what our training will be and what the expectations would be in our ed prep programs. Because again, I think one and done is not enough, and that's what we're seeing.
Question, Ms. Saracini? So with respect to ethics training, I mean, in the ed prep program, they go through that before they enter a, ever enter a classroom. Is that correct?
That is correct. They are supposed to. But again, as we are evolving with our state review and our science of reading audits, we're looking under the hood, and we're really seeing some trends that we haven't. And so we have gone through thirteen the, over the past year. And this is where we're seeing what we need to, to change at our level to ensure our students are safe and our candidates are fully aware of what they need to go in day one ready. Because I feel that with social media and all the devices, we are learning that times are different when I went through versus what's now. And so I know that we need to change as well, and that's what we're seeing. And we hope to provide those guidelines and those resources for them to use throughout and not just have us come and do a training. It really needs to be embedded within their courses and appropriate places within their courses.
Agreed. And I'll, I'll say too, not that this is defendable in any way, shape or form, but, you know, it, it has, it can be a little confusing, I guess, for those candidates because they too are still students. And, but in this setting, they are someone who is of authority, and so they have to recognize that they are transitioning also in their roles. So I, no, I don't understand it, but I do understand that particular dynamic. So thank you for that.
Yes.
May I ask one more question? The PLSB sanctioning guidelines, I know these are just guidelines and they're not hard.
Yes, ma'am.
Are these public? And are these shared with educators during any sort of training?
They are public, and, I mean, I know that our office always, when we've done training, we always go over those. And yes, they are shared.
Thank you. Board members, any further questions or comments?
I just want to clarify, had this been a fully certified teacher, same actions, it would be level four, correct?
If they had a license, it would be revocation. Yes, we would call it revocation.
I think Secretary Leavitt and I spoke about this off-topic a while ago. And he said, you know, in his training, they looked at specific scenarios. And this is one of those perfect scenarios that needs to be embedded in that training because it is such, it's an odd thing where we come, I believe, we need to come down firmly. And DHS is like, well, you didn't really violate anything, but our standards are very different. And this situation is very different. So hoping that we can add specific scenarios, this might be the perfect one and recent enough that it's relevant.
And we just had a full board meeting on Friday, and we discussed of really looking at the sanctions and really going through that process. And we had rich discussion. And I know in the Subcommittee, I don't sit on that, but I know Whitney and her team, they worked with them as well. Because we want more clarity and more consistency.
Yes, and I will add that in the training she received, it was clarified that code of ethics applies to you when you're an intern.
I, I find it shocking, even considering her status as a college student and his status as an eighteen-year-old senior in high school. I, I find it shocking that it would have to be told to her that, that that is inappropriate. I, I, I support the, the most strenuous penalty that we can impose to prevent her from being a teacher in the future, only because this is such a demonstration of lack of judgment. And I don't, I just don't think that we can trust her in Arkansas public classrooms in the future. You know, I hope that she learns from this and, and recovers from it and has a fantastic career a, as a high-upstanding individual in another field. But I think we have to protect our classrooms from people like this. And I think that there needs to be a strong message sent to even college students who are looking forward to a future career in education, that there is a broad separation in the relationship with the students that you teach, and that separation is growing. You know, we, we are expecting even further distance in the relationship between teacher and student, maybe than was expected twenty years ago. And so I hope that the culture of the classroom for future educators will be all kinds of hands-off, stay all kinds of away, and just keep things extremely high-level professional to prevent stuff like this from happening.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we affirm that this educator violated standards one and two.
There's a motion by Ms. Keener. And remember, there will be a set of three motions. The first is that standards one and two were violated. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hunter?
Questions or comments?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So I'll make a motion that we modify the recommendations of the PLSB board. Is that correct?
And to what, and to what?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Modify, and we wish it to be a level four public notice? Is that what it's, sorry?
There's a motion by Ms. Keener to modify the sanction to be a level four public notification.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Rollins. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The third motion is rationale.
And I'll make a motion that we explain the rationale to be based on the PLSB sanctioning guidelines, that it was confirmed that there was communication about sexual relationships, sexual pictures, and planning a relationship after the student graduates.
There's a motion by Ms. Keener with a rationale. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Henderson. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just to clarify, is that in addition to the previous rationale, or is that a new rationale?
Well, the rationale that was given were reasons that it shouldn't be level four. So I modified it using level four to explain the reasoning that it should be. Is that?
Yes, ma'am. So we will make that a new rationale. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. We appreciate the work you and your team do. We hope to not have to see you. No offense, but these are.
Can't make any promises.
These are difficult, but appreciate also the training that you are working on to go out to teachers so that we see incidents like this few and farther between. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Smith, you're here to present us with the two thousand and twenty-five meeting dates.
Y'all have taken it really easy on me today. I'm telling you, you kept a short meeting for me, everything. Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner, presenting today dates for the State Board Meetings, State Board Meetings of Education in the Future is based off of the calendar of previous second Thursday of each month. So if there was to be a special board meeting or a special work session, those could be included as you move forward.
Any questions, board members? To my right, to my left? With that, the floor will be open for a motion. A motion by Mr. Brad to approve the meeting dates. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any opposed? Motion passes. With that, that's the end of our action agenda. We will move on to the consent agenda. And board members, any items that you would like to pull or ask questions about from the consent agenda? To my left. We do unfortunately have a number of PLSB cases again. To my right. With that, I'm going to take just thirty seconds. I think I've been on the soapbox every year and this is my last year to do it. Item number three is our annual statistical report. This has a lot of information about funding and spending in schools. And there's often a lot of preconceived, misconceived motions out there in the public about money in schools and how it's spent. And I always like to urge the public to look at this report, particularly those that are invested in their local schools that want to have conversations with their school boards but don't know where to start. One particular piece I pulled out and have pulled out over the years is per people expenditures, which is how much districts are spending per student. This is a really hard conversation to have because some districts have a lot greater needs. Some also are a lot smaller. It depends on size as well. But as a state, we're spending about thirteen thousand dollars per student, which is a lot. If we look back to data ten years ago, we were spending nine thousand dollars per student. There's a lot of change in that, federal money and other things. But this is a data point that I think is important to track over time to get an understanding of what's going on in schools. Furthermore, if we look at school districts in the state, pulled out Benville School District spending about eleven thousand per kid, Springdale's at thirteen thousand per kid, Little Rock's at eighteen thousand per kid, Bliville nineteen. And our top spinner this past year was OCL at twenty-five thousand per student. Now, we have to take into account these past few years, we've had a lot of federal money infused into the system. So this is not all state money and this is expenditure. And some of these have larger expenditures per year. But there's a lot of data and information in this report that I think would arm the public to go to their school boards, to go to their superintendents, to have these conversations, to get a better understanding of what's going on in their district. And I will get off my soapbox now.
Dr. Moore, if I could add to that, maybe at a future workshop and an update, we actually, this past year, created an additional dashboard that shows the unrestricted fund balances of school districts and gives a more detailed accountability for what the expenses are for public transparency. And it's all publicly available data, but we're aggregating it in a dashboard that we kind of rolled out in the last few months, but a lot of people may not be aware about it. So as we move forward, maybe in the next school year, we can highlight that at a workshop to show that it's a user-friendly place.
That's great because a lot of money is restricted and has to be spent in certain areas and districts sort of tie. But there is other unrestricted funds that, you know, certainly this is a very nuanced conversation. It's not black or white of who has more money and what that means. But I think the more we can arm both the public and districts with information, the better. Okay, with that, thank you. I do think, I've said that every year, I think it's usually on our action agenda item. We will move forward. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion by Ms. Rollins to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We will move along to our report section. Ms. Whitlow is here to talk about Blavell School District. And I know there's a number here in the audience. We appreciate you coming in today, especially so early to be here with us.
Yes, Sheila Whitlow, Director of the Office of Coordinated Support and Service, and good morning. I'm here to provide a brief update, but the school board, we have representation from the school board as well as the district interim superintendent here and some district staff that will be here to report to you today. But before I turn over to them, I'd like to share with you the continued support that we are providing to the district. We have a state leadership coach that is onsite weekly, sometimes as many as two days a week to work directly with principals as well as some of the district-level instructional staff. We also have people from the agency that have provided support. The Crowley's Ridge Co-op is actively involved in supporting the district, novice teachers, providing professional development. And most recently, I've worked with Pam Castor, who's the director, and she and I have worked on a ongoing intense direct support for the interim superintendent. So she will be onsite weekly, providing onsite direct support, shoulder-to-shoulder support to the interim superintendent. Also wanted to add that I have been intending the board meetings because that was a question and concern when we visited with them in the beginning in August. And I can report that the meetings are being, the agendas are being followed. And the meetings are run well. They are respectful, conducted with professionalism. And I've been to work sessions as well, so I'm happy to report that to you as well today. As far as other things to share, I just wanted to let you know that they are very open to our support and responding to the suggestions that are being made. And so we've not experienced any resistance at all during our time that we've been working with the Blavell School District. So if it's okay now, I'd like to ask Ms. Blankenship to come. She's serving as interim superintendent.
Good morning. I am Jennifer Blankenship, serving as the interim superintendent for the Blavell School District. And thank you for having us to come back and to present again. We're going to start with staffing. I texted Ms. Whitlow earlier this week, but you already had this. We do have some updates about our unlicensed teachers. We have about six that's going to come off of that list. We've had two of our teachers from the Philippines to get their licenses, provisionals. We've had another one gain reciprocity. We have an aspiring teacher who will get her license this, in December, this month. We have another teacher who's also graduating. We'll get his license applied for standard. I believe we just had two more to pass their practices and they have applied for their license as well. So that number is going down and the license number is going up. We do still have the same virtual instruction teachers. We do, we are trying, our sixth grade principal, she's working, trying to get somebody to actually come in and be onsite. So we have, she's searching. We were sending a list from Ms. Castor at the Co-op and I think it came from Mr. Sullivan of graduates. So our principals are reaching out, trying to see if we can get any of those who are graduating to come in and give our students face-to-face instruction.
What is meant by, when you list virtual instruction, there it says sixth math and then all those other...
The AP stats and pre-calc and chemistry are at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah, through virtual Arkansas.
Okay.
And we do have facilitators in those rooms and the MCL and the principal's support to go in and make sure that students are doing what they're supposed to do and also watching and monitoring that teacher and see if they have any issues, if they notice trends or whatever with our students that need to be addressed. Teachers and support that they're getting, the observations with the feedback, the principals are in there. We have, do have support that comes in, work with the principals to make sure that when they're in the educated effectiveness system, that they're giving the feedback that's going to directly help those teachers grow. And we still have the National Soundtrack, which keeps us all on track to make sure that we're spending our time on instruction. Because sometimes you can get caught up in the management side of things. So that's our drive to make sure. One of the things about our schedules, you know, there was some concern about that. We've already started talks for the spring. The counselors are meeting with the Cardonics people and we're going to start mapping that out. I believe the first meeting starts in February. There's a timeline when students' information has to be entered. Students are going to start during their schedules. And we hope to have, we plan to have, all of that outlined before school is out so that we'll know and be able to see what's needed, how many sections, how many courses. And we'll be able to have those students' schedules in July is the goal. My interim assessments, most of our students are at level one and level two. So we took the interim assessments and they're building a document that's going to have our interim assessments, their Atlas assessments from the spring to directly compare and we'll be able to see how many are growing. That what, we're using the colors that was on the, that was provided so that we can see this growth when it happens for the next interim. Right now, they're still at level ones and level twos. We did have some bright spots with some fours in there. And so I think having this document and being able to see that data. But more importantly, what is each building doing to address and move our students from level one and two up to threes and fours? Each building already had an intervention time. So now that intervention time is going to be tailored more specifically for each student. And what are they missing? What's the skill gaps? What needs to be addressed and how soon can we get in there and start addressing those things? Some of our groups may have to be revamped. It's like, okay, so we noticed this group here, this is our target focus. So we're targeting students and how to move them. And we hope that the second interim we'll be giving is going to be more reflective of the growth that our students are doing and the work that our teachers are putting into during tier one. So we're starting in the classroom at tier one. And then when we pull those small groups to get more, even more targeted intervention, that's our plan to move our students from level one and two to threes and fours. Our current enrollment update, we're down fifty-one students. And talking to the attendance people and counselors in each building, students are going to different districts. Some of them have moved out of the city, out of the county. So we've lost students to neighboring cities and neighboring counties.
So, I'm sorry, I need to, just for my clarification, you're losing them to choice or they're physically moving?
No, they're moving. They are moving.
Out of the area, completely out of the area.
Mr. Hammett will give the report for the Blavell School Board. And then if you have any questions or you want to ask questions now or wait till he finishes, either way, he's fine with me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blankenship. Desmond Hammett, Blavell Board President. Good morning to you all. Before I start with the Blavell School update, I would just like to recognize one of our teachers who just recently became nationally board certified. Mrs. Kim Byrd received her national board certification. I think that's one of the highlights of my morning that I would love to share with you guys before I give the Blavell Board update. Thank you. As Ms. Blankenship said and Mrs. Whitlow, thank you. We've been busy in Blavell doing the work, getting this train back on the right tracks. We were cautiously optimistic during our state board meeting. And I can say I'm very optimistic that we're headed in the right direction with some of the moves that we've made. During the past election cycle, we have a new board member, Ms. Ivory Lewis, who's here, that has joined the Blavell Board of Directors. We've also had some very impactful work sessions with the board where we are understanding how to work with one another, understanding the strengths and the values, and where everyone gets on and gets off at on the bus to understand our roles and responsibilities there. We've also, as a matter of fact, we're here at the ASBA conference this week, participating in the trainings there. Myself and board member Erin Langston had the opportunity to tour the Academy of Math and Science yesterday here in Little Rock. Was very pleased with what we saw. There were some takeaways that were immediately taken away. But we were very open to suggestions and seeing something different and the model that can be applied in Blavell as well. So I'm very pleased with that. We also put out an RFP. We've selected a vendor educational direction. I'm very optimistic on their ability to come in and provide support around leadership, building leaders, admin leaders. So I look forward to that plan. And that scope of work will be approved at the next regular board meeting, December nineteenth. We've also had interviews for the superintendent position. We've narrowed down to three interviews that were done last week. We're in the process of selecting the way, the path forward that's best for us at this time. This was kind of an off-cycle time to conduct a superintendent search. So we're looking at factors that will matter the most at this time during this selection process. We have a work session scheduled for Monday, December the sixteenth, where we will evaluate and hopefully provide the best path forward at that time for us around our superintendent update. So with that, we'll take questions.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Yes, Secretary.
So first, I also want to report to the board how much better the circumstances are for the Blavell students. I know I've been pretty critical in the past and we have to kind of sometimes do that every now and then because we're here to make sure our students are getting the best opportunities they can. And we had to be honest about what we were seeing in an entire school district that was failing students, year after year after year. We had to break that cycle. And Sheila and her team have been active and moving forward. And I don't know if there's any Brene Brown fans out here, but in kind of Dier to lead, she talks about a term about leaning into vulnerability, right? And that board had to do that. They had to be honest with themselves and saying, the way we're working as adults, we're not being good role models for students. And we cannot be dysfunctional. And it was very clear that the community has support for that school district, which is why this is such a special endeavor. Because that part of the state, the school district in Blavell, should be a bright spot. And the work that they're doing around partnering with an external operator, they did that on their own. We didn't require that of them as a board. They said, you know what, we need some additional support. If we're going to be honest about what we want to build and the capacity that we need to sustain, let's get the best of the best. Let's go around the state and see model schools that are serving similar types of students that we serve here. And if there's something we can take away and learn from, we're going to bring that back to our board. So I feel like this board has risen to the challenge to be honest with themselves, to say, we can do better. Ms. Blankenship, as you're monitoring the student progress and providing those interventions, you're going to see the growth in your students because you're focused on building capacity for teachers, making sure we can get the best adults that we can in front of them. If I was to give any message to this board now, I know there's many board members here, is choosing your superintendent is probably the biggest decision that you have to make as a board. And as you go through that process, as we lean into vulnerability about kind of the actions that we need to take as a board, do that same approach when choosing a superintendent. Don't just settle. Like, make sure you get the best of the best because leadership matters. And I don't think there's any better decision you can make in getting the best individual to run that school. And if somebody doesn't rise from that pool and just blow you away and say, this is the best that we can get. I'm a fan of Ms. Blankenship's. I think she's doing a wonderful job. And sometimes you don't need to go out and recruit talent. I think you should sometimes look in your backyard. We celebrated Dr. Tran this morning, who was an individual that kind of, just kind of surfaced through the process that wasn't licensed, wasn't certified, but said, this is the right person. How do we put him on a path? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but there's a place for everyone. And you, you as a board chair and Ms. Blankenship, as a superintendent, have heeded the call and responded. And just make sure if you choose a new candidate, we are not going backwards. So let's keep this momentum moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. Board members, comments or questions?
A question about the process for the superintendent selection. Why did the board find it necessary to conduct the search during this kind of off-time? Instead of here we are, now it's December, you're about to have a meeting to discuss candidates. And, you know, three months from now, you could have a whole new pool of applicants that might be interested in moving.
So initially, when the commissioner, Stacy Smith, came to you guys, it was communicated that we had put our superintendent on leave and that we had an uncredentialed person in the seat in the interim at that time. So through this process, we wanted to, at that time, give Ms. Blankenship the waiver necessary required to be in that interim position. But the lack of leadership was one of the main focuses while we wanted to launch a search at that time. It was not the ideal time. And if Ms. Blankenship would consider, the board would make that decision based on what Ms. Blankenship would like to do. So we understood that this wasn't the ideal time. However, our circumstances and the immediate need for effective leadership led us down this road.
And maybe you could kind of expand... And, and maybe you could kind of expand a little bit more on the role of why you went to get that external operator and what is that support? Like what, what is it that you're asking them to do and, and why you feel like we, we gotta have some continuity?
Yes. So the, the RFP that went out, um, we met with three different vendors. The scope of work, um, was compiled by the district team and the board. We worked together, had a work session. You tell me your instruction curriculum, your day-to-day needs. We understood our need, what we wanted to see in the leadership at the admin level and the building levels. So when we vetted, when we interviewed at the selection process for the, the external partners, leadership support, direct support was one of the biggest pieces that we wanted to, uh, deliver on. Um, and throughout that process, uh, and even the recommendation of the, the district admin team, uh, we went with the strongest partner that could drive leadership and accountability for the Blavell School District, more than anything. Uh, that management piece, understanding education and the value of education and how to build leaders was one of the determining factors there.
And when you're speaking about leaders, you're, you're talking about district leaders, superintendent principals?
Yes.
Just kind of leadership as a whole of who's running each of our campuses? And what are we doing to provide information?
To support to them, yes.
And then also from the teacher side, the direct support and the one-on-one coaching. And I've had conversations with them because we were going back and forth just trying to make sure that the scope of work is what we need and that direct support for students and teachers rather in all areas, because it wasn't just math and sci- math and English. You know, everybody's always on math and literacy. But they're also going to support us in social studies and science, which are also big areas. And we have students in those areas and they need that support as well. The teachers need that support and they're going to give us that. And so we've been breaking down things. They've taken my suggestions or the district team. The district team has been working hard as well. And I think tomorrow, there's a Zoom setup with the educational directions. And we're going through that and they're ready to get started. We're ready to get started. And the support they're going to give and provide is probably just what we need at this time.
Ms. Keener?
Yeah, I had a question. So, um, early childhood is my area of passion. And I noticed that between the twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-two, twenty-three year and the, um, twenty-three, twenty-four year, that, um, Blavell dropped the ABC slots. Um, and I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. I know this may have been before your time or you weren't in your current position. Um, but do you, do either of you have any information about that and that decision and, um, meeting the needs of, of pre-K?
You said ABC, pre-K?
Yes, the ABC slots.
I can't speak about the twenty-two, twenty-three school years. But it's through our co-op.
Okay.
And so that's where those students are enrolled. I do believe that we have quite a few that they might've had to add a teacher this summer. So I know we have more students than we've had previous.
So you'd, um, I guess what hap- um, so on the ABC slots that we approved recently, Blavell did not have any enrolled. And so somehow the, I guess the money shifted from Blavell School District to the co-op?
Yes, it's been through our co-op for a few years now.
Okay. But, and that's in the primary school, is that right?
Yes, it's located on our primary school campus, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Dr. Arnold, questions? Board members to my right. Mr. Anderson?
Uh, thank you, uh, for your presentation and definitely the comments. When I think about, you know, your presentation and what I've heard today, I, I think about the rule threes. What do I hear? What I see? What I feel? And when I think about that and what I've heard, working really close with Ms. Whitlow, I'm honored and excited that teachers are in classrooms. Students are fired up. The energy, the enthusiasm is incredible. We understand it takes time, it takes work. At the end of the day, so everything's about results. And, uh, I'm happy that you and, um, board member actually came to the academy yesterday because obviously, um, no secret, I mean, I have an industry background. When I think about opportunities, when I think about moving forward, I'm happy that you did see some value on that and certainly something on the table.
It, it's, it's very eye-opening to go and see what can be and where we need to get to and see that model in action. And, um, I'm pleased and, um, I thank you guys for the invite to the Academy of Math and Science. And just piggybacking off our industry, our steel industry that's in Mississippi County, we have a bright future as we prepare to get this right. And I believe the industries will be very pleased with the high quality of talent and, um, and seeing our schools thrive and do well. So it's a win for us all.
Board members, any more questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you for coming here today. It speaks volumes to be able to share that with us. We look forward to your going up from here and your success as you work with your students. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And congratulations to the new board member. Welcome. Thank you for coming today and we appreciate you all. Up next, we have a report on KIP Delta that we had seen last month and asked to hear an update next.
Good morning, everyone. Daryl Smith, Assistant Commissioner of Office of School Choice and Parent Empower, reporting on behalf of the Charter Board and Charter Office on, uh, for special education as well as some of the other things that are happening at KIP Delta. As you know, last, uh, at the last meeting, that this board placed KIP Delta on probation for, uh, some special education violations precipitated by lack of services provided to one particular student. Uh, additional, and as the, as the Charter Board has continued to investigate, we found some additional things in financial management, some board oversight, some things of that nature that we have, uh, continued to look into. I'd like to update you on some of the, uh, some of the actions that have been taken since the last meeting with this board. Uh, there was a new, the new superintendent, new interim superintendent has been named and maybe here today, he's in route, I think. Uh, I knew he burnt it is here. Kevin Smith and he'll, uh, he's certainly here to be here to answer any questions and update you further on anything. There has been a new board chair named as well, uh, for the, for the district and for KIP Delta. I believe he is on his way down from Fayetteville in route. He, hopefully he'll be here soon. Um, in addition to that, there have been additional administrative changes made to the staff at KIP Delta to help precipitate new changes to make, to make to that school. The special education program has, um, evaluated and has a plan in place to provide, uh, services to all identified students in addition to the stu- the student that was named in our last meeting. There has been a contract established to provide related encompass- comprehensive services to all, uh, special ed students. Uh, there have been new board oversight procedures that are in place now to, uh, to take better leadership over the district. Uh, we have established new financial oversight and staffing, including providing services by APSRC. And they are in the development in conjunction with the department or comprehensive school improvement process to help identify further needs that the district may need to continue to viable and be sustainable. So at that time, I would like to maybe bring up the new interim superintendent, Kevin Smith, to address any concerns and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Moore, Secretary Leva, Commissioners, Board Member Staff. Uh, my name is Kevin Smith. I'm the interim executive director of KIP Delta. Um, my new interim chairman, George Cotton, should be walking in any day. I'm trying my best not to, uh, delay too much to get him here. He's, he was, uh, uh, he's the vice chancellor at UAPB. He had a meeting this morning. He got caught in some traffic, but I expect him to literally walk in behind me any minute. We have Rebecca Worsham, our attorney here, Sandra Doggett, who is with APSRC, Sped, who is helping us, uh, on the, on Sped services and try to help us deal with those issues. Daniel Rattler, our Sped Director, um, and, uh, and then myself. And I, I want to say, uh, the part I wanted to say, uh, and maybe Mr. Cotton will be here in time to, to do that is, is first of all, thank you. Um, accountability is, is important. And if it weren't for accountability and what you did in November, uh, we wouldn't be here, uh, probably. And it was a real wake-up call to, to our community, to our school. And that's how it's supposed to be. Uh, you know, you hope, you don't have to do that. But, you know, it's kind of a tough love thing and, and you did it. And, and I'm not just saying that. I, I want to, I want to thank you for, uh, for, for what happened in November. I also wanted to say that, you know, you could have multiple reactions to that. You could be just witheringly mean and give up on us. You could let us hang out to dry, uh, and think, well, we'll probably take care of ourselves. And we're doing the, and we were in the process of accomplishing that. Uh, or you could reach out and really help the patient, um, stabilize and get back, uh, to where the patient needs to be. And, and y'all have done the latter. I've been around federal, state and local government my whole life. I've been a staffer. I know what good staffing looks like. I know what bad staffing looks like. And I don't say this to flatter anybody. I say it because whenever I see good staffing, uh, I, I know it when I see it and I make sure the people over them know it. You have an excellent staff. And I just can't say enough, uh, Secretary, uh, and, and everybody else, what a great job they have done reaching out to us in the last four weeks, uh, Thanksgiving included, to help us. And we are trying our best to take advantage of that. So as you just heard, since November, what have we done? Uh, we have a new interim chairman, who I hope will be here soon. Uh, he's a very dynamic, uh, person. He's a native of Henley. He has a, a rich background in education and development. We, uh, uh, they made me interim executive director. Um, I have a lot of background in public administration or public, um, government administration as well as econo- or educational policy. Uh, which by the way, um, you gotta have good policy, but you, the good policy you have is only as good as your people carrying it out. So, you know, I just want to say that again. You have excellent people carrying out your policy and this policy's worked for us. Uh, it's, it has gotten our attention. We, um, are going, the, the actual, uh, uh, the actual rules for the KIP board was, were to meet quarterly. Um, I think that was part of the problem. I think Mr. Cotton and I both think that was a big part of the problem. And so they're, uh, right now moving towards monthly meetings and since November, almost weekly. Um, and so the board is engaged, the board has heard you, and the board, board is acting. Uh, we immediately just made some financial changes, um, to, to help with that. Uh, I would say that, uh, we also immediately, uh, contracted with, uh, related services vendors, uh, so that we could meet the, one of the violations that we had was special education. We are now in place as the school, uh, regarding the other violation with IP, with the student and the student's family. The biggest missing component, uh, on our side of that was transportation, providing adequate transportation. Uh, we have now a handicapped wheelchair accessible bus. We have, uh, a bus driver, backup driver who have been trained. We have one-on-one assistants who have been trained in seizures and all the rest of that. Uh, we have everything ready. Um, my goal was to have this resolved before the day, but the, um, the mother had to cancel the meeting at the last minute. And so it's rescheduled for Tuesday. But we are, um, poised, all we're waiting for is is the authority to proceed and we'll be able to, um, provide those services. Um, and then finally, we, uh, as I said, we've done a lot on financial services. We've contracted with the Arkansas Public School Resource Center to help us, uh, catch up and get to be where we need to be on our finances. Uh, we also have a, a new, a fairly new finance director who comes from them, uh, with experience and we have some more to do in that. Uh, we had a bad audit, uh, that we just got. We went before the audit committee and we pledged to, uh, resolve those issues and, and to prevent them from happening. We also decided, uh, to start the process of using legislative audits, ER audits, non-private audits, so it would be fully accountable, um, and so forth, um, and more accurate. And I've, I've written down a whole lot more, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. And I would say that, you know, seriously, um, you know, there's no need to sugarcoat it. I mean, our, our school was in bad shape. Um, thanks to your actions, uh, in, in November, you, you did get our attention. And, uh, we made a lot of changes and thanks to you, we're kind of in the, in the ER, but patient, depending on the outcome of this meeting, the, the, the patient is, is stable and, uh, and it probably wouldn't be without you. And we, we have oxygen and we have an IV and all that. The next step is to, is to get the patient out of the hospital, back on their feet and where they need to be. And that's, a lot of that is on us. Thank you again for all the support you provided and be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
So if I can add to, thank you, one, for, for coming in and providing an update. And the reality is, is we're all big proponents of school choice. We're all big proponents of empowering parents. But the last thing we want is to have choice options just to have choice. Choice needs to be of value and needs to be of quality. And when, when we were speaking with leadership from your school last month, it was apparent that there wasn't anything innovative happening. It wasn't anything where basic students' needs were being met, especially violating. We, we took a sanction on, on the accreditation status of the school. And there was a sense of, of my frustrations, I felt like there was no urgency to figure out what was going on and find out who needed help and support and coming up with a plan. And, um, I think the KIP board felt that frustration from our board and, um, to their credit, took action, right? And felt like they needed to do a better job in owning the outcomes of the students and the product of choice options that they're providing. So in the last, I, I guess about three to four weeks, I know Dr. Smith and Mr. Sewell and, um, Sheila, but we've had a slew of folks going in there and having very robust, honest conversations about, um, things we have grave concerns over. And the response that we're getting now is demonstrating that they're hearing our frustration and they're responding with urgency, which we did not feel a month ago. So is, is, uh, your analogies are great, you know, we're, we're getting things moving in the right direction, but we have not arrived. And there's a lot of work that still needs to be done because if we're going to have choice options for families, they need to be of quality. We can't lie to students and families and say, coming here is a good thing when it's not. And that's what we're going to address. And, um, I think we need to continue to have updates and stay the course. So I'm very pleased with the progress of the interim superintendent. Mr. Cotton, uh, as, I guess he's established as the new board chair, has responded well and has been in, in great communication. And, uh, we're going to return that campus back to the status it was about a decade ago. It was the flagship school in that region, in that area. And, and if they can do it before, there's no reason why they couldn't do it again. And, uh, we're going to get these pieces, uh, put into place to make sure we can restore that status.
Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. Board members, questions or comments? Mr. Anderson?
To kind of add to Secretary's, uh, comments, uh, Backs Mill, uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, thank you for coming in today. And, uh, I too agree wholeheartedly. There are some opportunities. And we can't thank you enough for facing this challenge head-on. Uh, when you think about moving forward, uh, please continue to engage. Engage in a way you never engaged before. Trust, verify.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Further comments to my left, questions, Dr. Arnold?
I appreciate your edifying remarks. Very encouraging. But I, and I hope not to put you on the spot, but one question is left unresolved for me in that, could you address why it took last month's wake-up call to draw attention to these deficiencies? It seemed like last month I was on this planet and this month I'm on this planet and I've only been here one month. So.
No, it's, it's an excellent question and, um, and you're right. Uh, I think, as I said before, um, I mean, I've I think, as I said before, I can just give you my opinion, if that's okay, that's all I can really say. But I really think the board had been treated somewhat like an advisory committee instead of a true governing board. That's my opinion. And when that happens, we all need accountability. We all need, we all need a boss, right? Even when I'm the boss, my wife's really the boss, so, you know, there's always... And I don't think that's healthy. And that's really my answer, is, the board, I will say, started to wake up to some things probably a couple of months before the November meeting, but the November meeting was, that put it over the top.
Okay.
Thank you for that. That was, I think, very fair. And I want to, first of all, thank you for coming. I imagine there weren't many folks at KIP that were just itching to get in front of us again, so I do appreciate you coming. And I'm excited to hear about the new energy and the renewed relationship with the board. That was something that, I was shocked they weren't here last month, and so I'm thrilled to hear that they're more engaged and offering that accountability. And it sounds like you're starting to move from excuses, we heard last month, to actions that we're hearing this month, and we look forward to hearing more. So thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to go from maybe over-promising and under-delivering and the other way around. So we can under-promise and over-deliver, is our goal.
Is that your guy?
And this is Mr. Cotton.
Just in time.
I'm sorry, this is really probably a little bit unnerving to walk in and immediately... Mr. Cotton, if you could come join me. This is, this is George Cotton. He is our, like I said, our interim board chair, and I'll just turn it over to him. We've kind of, I've given, the state gave their report, I gave mine, so...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cotton, for joining us. And just to kind of recap, I think we kind of went over some of the deficiencies, the action plan, what the next steps are, how we're going to continue to support. But the board, I think, was kind of asking some more of the questions of, why did it take last month? What was going on from a governance perspective that led to this? And how can we make sure that doesn't happen again? Maybe you could address that.
Sure. And thank you, and good morning, and my apologies for being late. George Cotton, I'm the interim board chair. In my day job, I also happen to serve as vice chancellor of advancement at the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff. And one of the reasons I'm late is we had a cabinet meeting this morning, so I literally had to run from there here. But also, I want to make sure that you understand that I'm a student of the Delta. Grew up in Helena West, Helena, Arkansas. And so for me, this isn't just an opportunity to get this thing right, it's an opportunity also, as a resident of Phillips County who graduated from Helena Central High School, to make sure that the children of the Delta have the same experience I have. Kevin and I, he probably already told you, we're both, we have an interesting title in front of our names, we're both interims. I was on the board, I guess about the past couple of years. But one of the things I want to make sure that the board understood is, and I've said this before, that while the board may not have been sleep at the switch when a lot of this was happening, we were most certainly nodding. And one of the things that Kevin and I have committed is to make sure that we pay attention to detail. Several of the changes that we've implemented, I don't know if Kevin have already talked about, but we've been very aggressive in moving to make sure that these changes take place and that we implement the recommendations that we're supposed to implement. We've also, as recently as yesterday, the board also knows that there'll be no more three and four meetings a year. We're going to be meeting monthly. They've heard from Kevin and I almost every single day. We've been meeting with stakeholders and we'll be meeting with members of the community. So we intend to implement aggressive practices that make sure that we are on top of the finance part, that we're making sure that, especially when it comes to our students and special ed needs, that those are served. Kevin was selected, quite frankly, not just because he's sharp and from the Delta, but Kevin is a person who's known for getting things done. He knows people, both in the educational and the political community. My background is professional fundraising, so I'm a professional fundraiser. We've already reached out to the philanthropic community, who we also had to assure that we're getting this right. So, long story short, this isn't just an educational opportunity for us. We realize that it's serious, and we're responding aggressively to make sure that you're convinced that we're going to get this right, and we're going to get it right.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. We really appreciate you being here today and jumping right in to share with us the work that you all are doing. Board members, more questions or comments? Ms. Rollins?
One of the things we haven't heard yet this morning is, how are you working with your parents? How are you working with your community and building that confidence back with them?
If I can, and I'm glad you said that, is it Rollins? As recently as yesterday, I got an email from a parent. And one of the advantages and both disadvantages that Kevin and I both have is, people know us from the Delta and they have our cell phone numbers. So as recently as yesterday, I received initially a text, but then a phone call from a parent who wanted to know if we were going to have an opportunity, allow them an opportunity to be heard. One of the first things we said that we were going to do, and we're going to do it, is we're going to initiate community listening sessions, where we're going to allow the public opportunities to, quite frankly, not just talk to us, but chastise if necessary. You know, we had an opportunity to talk to the press a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that I told them is that we won't be hiding. We won't be, quite frankly, twisting the truth. We all, you know, in addition to the community listening sessions, I think Kevin and maybe one of the other members of the board, it may have come from a parent, also suggested that we provide kind of a community panel who would provide input and opportunities to us. We're also going to be having youth engagement opportunities, where younger people will be providing opportunities. So we're trying to make sure we do that as fast as we can, and we also, at a retreat a couple of weeks ago, maybe in three, time is passing so fast, indicated that sooner rather than later, we would be having a public forum for the public to have an opportunity to come in and find out not just what's going on, but how we intend to make sure that the KIP that emerges out of this is not the KIP that people have grown to know really over the past month or so.
Thank you. Ms. Henderson?
Dr. Cotton, thank you for your comments. KIP, Knowledge is Power program. Model for KIP is every student should get a college degree. Or, I don't know if this, does this still exist?
It is still the National KIP Initiative. One of the things I shared with some people last week is, one of the reasons that this is personal to me also, is the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff receives a lot of students from KIP Delta, the Blyville and Helena West, Helena area, and I've gotten to know them over the past four years. So it is our commitment to make sure that students who actually want to pursue a college education not only have an opportunity to do it, but I'm pleased to say at the university, we've been the beneficiaries of several philanthropic gifts. But we're also trying to make sure that they do it with the least amount of cost necessary. So that is still our commitment, but again, total transparency, we're taking a look at everything, and we're asking tough questions of ourselves as it relates to the original mission. KIP, once upon a time, I'm sure Kevin talked about this, and you know this probably better than I do, KIP was a shining star in the state of Arkansas. We intend to get it back to that point, but in order to do that, sometimes, you know, tough decisions make need for, necessary for tough actions. So we're doing tough actions to make sure we get back to that, Director Sanders, oh, I'm sorry, Henderson, yeah.
You mentioned implementing aggressive practices.
Yes.
You know, when I think about aggressive practices, when I think about every student should get a college degree, it's how do you define degrees?
Yeah.
Industry certifications are degrees. One thing I really like about the Pine Bluff area, you have innovative innovation centers there.
Yeah.
With the industry in northeast, how cool could it be to create that framework, not particularly for a innovation center, but that level of discipline that prepares students for industry jobs?
You're right. And one of the things that we realize at KIP is that, you know, students learn in different ways and they come to the table with different needs. You're right about the innovation hub. We've got, you know, interestingly enough, the ERDC, the Enterprise Research and Development Center at the university falls under my purview. And, you know, we're sensitive to the fact that while we want every student to get a college education, some students go about it in different ways. You know, we've got students who have two, four, six-year degrees, and some take longer. And we're sensitive to that. But also, at the same time, at KIP, we've got to make sure that we're preparing students based, with those basic needs that they have to be college-ready. So Kevin, as our executive director, will be making sure that he takes that deep dive and has a real conversation with staff. We've heard from staff already who want to be heard and who said that they have some ideas as to how we can turn this thing around, and we'll be listening to them as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Woods, did you have a question? Someone joined, Beadzun?
Can you hear me?
A little bit louder.
Is that any better?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, Dr. Smith and Mr. Cotton, thank you so much. I apologize that I couldn't be there. I had some car trouble this morning. One of the questions or concerns that I had last month was just regarding your special ed program. Can you talk a little bit about, just quick policies that you've put into place to sort of start building that program back up?
And that's an understandable question. There you are. The first thing, I think, was to make sure the related, to use that analogy, the first thing is to make sure the patient gets oxygen and gets an IV and all of that stuff. So we had to get the contracts in place for related services. That was absolutely number one, and that's very basic, I understand, but that had not been in place, and was one of the reasons we were put on probation. We have a director of special education, and we're in the process of trying to recruit two coordinators under her. And we're also, and we met with state staff about this, looking at some of the diagnostic tools to make sure they're being diagnosed correctly, and so that they get the services that they need, as appropriate to their diagnostic outcome. As far as, we have an excellent staff in place, they just need more support. And that's hard to do, and you want to understand, SPED knows that it's not easy because you don't have, it's hard to find people and so forth. But we're, we've done, I think, an amazing job in four weeks to try and get us to where we maybe should have been in August, but we are there now, and we are making progress on the stuff we should have already done. We're not at all, as Secretary pointed out, we've got a long, long way to go, and I don't want to say that. But we do have those tools in place, and they're proven tools that people have worked with the schools before, and they are now there and back in place, and they're motivated. I hope that answers your question.
No, no, that was helpful. Can you just tell me, we all, I know you said you did an audit and it didn't come back well. Can you talk about just some of the findings of your audit and just sort of maybe your top three things that you're doing between this month and next month to address those issues?
Yes, yes, ma'am. The biggest issues were just gaps in reporting and data entry for both income and expenditures. It's pretty basic stuff. It just wasn't entered, and it should have been. That's the, that's a pretty, it sounds simple. So we're having to go back and reconstruct those entries. Some of them are just, they're not coded correctly, some of it just wasn't entered at all. So they're having to go back and find the invoices and find the receipts, and at the same time, make sure that what's being audited currently is being done correctly. So to do that, as you can imagine, takes a lot of financial resources. So we had to bring in the Arkansas Public School Resource Center, and we contracted with them, and their team has already started, along with our finance director and her team. So we just got the audit ourselves maybe two weeks ago, around Thanksgiving. Our board accepted it, and then we were at the audit committee meeting maybe a week later to explain it. But that's what's in place. And we had already contracted for the financial services actually before we even got the audit.
Are your current students that are receiving SPED services, can you confirm that they have been receiving them at least since the start of school?
Yes, yes. Well, not since the start of school began, but they are receiving them as of now, today.
Okay.
And I've impressed on everybody, and they'll tell you if you run into them, that when someone asks that question at this board meeting, I don't want to have to make the excuse, I want to say, "Yes, sir," or "Yes, ma'am." So, yes, ma'am, they are in place, and receiving services right now.
And have, has there been any attempt to communicate with those parents when there was a lack of services? Or is that an ongoing conversation?
I would say it's, it's an ongoing conversation. Some of the parents have been very proactive, you know, reaching out to us when it comes to communication, and some of the parents, you know, leave it with the teacher or the But we, I guess, going back to that analogy, we tried to have all the nurses and the surgeons and everybody in that ER, not out in the parking lot, you know, talking about how the patient's doing yet, because we want them in there working on the patient. So there's been an awful lot of concentration on getting those things in place. But I do think, you know, after the day, as Mr. Cotton alluded, we're, that's, the communication is the next big thing. There were issues with communication before. And now that we hope we have the patients stabilized and ready to go, and I want to say, thanks to your wonderful staff, thanks to you, I'm very confident that we're going to ultimately reach those academic goals and be number two in Arkansas, according to US News and World Report one year, or better. But that is the next big thing. We haven't done as good a job as we should have, but we're going to.
Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Any further questions or comments? Okay, with that, I will reiterate, thank you for coming today, and more importantly, thank you for your work. We will, we'll be in touch as far as when the next update will be and what that looks like. Thank you both very much.
At your disposal. Thank y'all.
Thank you. With that, board reports? Any board members have anything they want to share out from this past month? We will allow our Teacher of the Year to share. We missed you last month, and glad you're here today.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Apologize for missing last month, had a visit up to ASU and speaking engagement there, so I've covered a lot of ground between now and then, and covered a few of the highlights of those trips as we go through here. One of the first trips, and the biggest highlight, I think, over the last two months was our trip down to McGee. McGee Elementary was one of three schools in the entire state of Arkansas that was named a National Blue Ribbon School by the, by the U.S. Department of Education. They were awarded for exemplary achievement gap closing by the U.S. Department of Ed. So they were rewarded for their growth that they've shown in a certain population of their students. Some of the highlights that the U.S. Department of Ed really noted was their systematic process to address students' academic deficits, a strong focus on reading and promoting literacy to students, parents, and community, the Hoot Award, which was for positive behavior program. Now McGee's mascot is the Owls, so that's where the Hoot comes from. And activities to expose students to real-life learning opportunities as well as the community's support. That was very evident in the day's celebration. The entire community was there, city government. And McGee, their normal color is red, the McGee Owls, that day, everybody was decked out in blue. And McGee being a Delta school, school over there in the Delta, they celebrated in Delta style. They loaded up a crop duster full of blue powder and made three passes over the campus and sprayed the blue powder to celebrate. It was a really cool day. I got to spend the rest of the afternoon with Assistant Superintendent Justin Holter, drove me around town and introduced me. And the one thing that was very evident is it's one of those communities, they face the same obstacles and challenges a lot of our rural schools do, but it's the community's support that they have, how deep that support goes. And that's, that's a common theme that I've seen around some of our rural schools that are having really good success. And the next stop was down the road to Wynn. Wynn has faced a very unique challenge over the last couple of years compared to most of our schools. If you recall, the tornado went through Wynn and wiped out the high school. It's a very unique situation up there right now. They have a temporary campus made of pods. Now, it's not like a tent city. They've done it in a unique fashion that really gives it a sense of home, it's a sense of campus. Now, it's not ideal, but it is really the best environment they could hold for until they get their new school completed, which I believe is scheduled for spring of '27. I could, I could be wrong about that. But even... But even, even in that temporary campus that they have right now, they're able to divide the pods up into departments, much like you would see at a regular campus. One of the things that stuck out to me was their CTE programs. It's a strong, they have strong CTE programs and it goes all the way down into the sixth grade. They have a career exploration for sixth graders. I'm a strong believer in the earlier, the better, introducing our students to possibilities for their future. When I went in there on that day, that they, they had a coffee store going, just like a coffee shop. They had students running around the campus, taking orders from teachers from each class, bringing those orders back with money, money exchange. Had a team in the back making the coffees and then other students were on delivery team. But the coolest part about it was seeing how excited and how engaged the students were with that entire process. And they do much more than just the coffee shop. But you can see the excitement when the kids go into those classrooms. And they, they know what they're about to learn today is going to really apply to their future. And another stop I made was Clarendon. I like to tell people that my feet have carried me through southwest Arkansas most of my life, but my roots go back to Clarendon High School and also into the soul of Monroe County. That's where my parents grew up. I have a lot of family still around the area. So it was really special to be able to go back and visit Clarendon. A lot of people knew me who I had not met yet, but they knew me from way back in the day when I was little. But one thing about Clarendon High School, they were a school of innovation in 2017. Clarendon Elementary was recently named the School of Innovation and Principal Cheryl Smith, she was named to the Extraordinary Educators Leadership Collaborative. And Mr. Vint over there, really special to meet him and get to visit with him. Mr. Vint is the longest active, actively serving superintendent in the state of Arkansas, more than 40 years. And then some of you may recognize Ms. Megan Abels up there, the 2016 Arkansas Teacher of the Year. She is now, she's still in Stuttgart, but she is now the new principal at Meekins Middle School. And if you know Ms. Abels, she is a spark of energy and spark of positivity. And this is just her first year as being principal at Meekins. And you can, you can sense the influence she's already had on her building there because it's a, it's a spark of positive when you walk into that building as well. She's instituted a new positive behavior program that's really helped change the culture at Meekins. Students have applied for leadership roles and they actually act as leaderships in, or as leaders in actively trying to be proactive to prevent discipline problems coming, from coming up. She's also calibrated with local officials to, and brought them into the process for the election of student council. So she's really tied it into civic engagement as well. It's not just a popularity contest that, you know, we, we see at a lot of schools sometimes. And she's also instituted a thriving MMS alumni program, which connects students to alumni who have gone through that school. They come back and really try to be a positive influence on the students as well. And something that is in the water at Stuttgart, because we had a little bit of a reunion when it comes to ATOYS. That is 2024 ATOY Regional finalist Julie Landrum, as well as our recent 2025 ATOY Regional finalist, Tanya Herring. Doing great work at Stuttgart. Also had the opportunity to visit Henderson University's Teacher College for Professional Development Day. These are pre-service educators who are in, in the middle of their residency. They had a full day of professional development. I got to share my story with them of how I ended up in education. My, my path to education also ran into two of my former students, Micah Gibson and Peyton Thornton. They are on the pathway to becoming teachers and coaches as well. And as y'all know, it's happened before in some of my stops. It's, it's really special to me to be able to run into some of my old kids and see that they're taking the same path. Also stopped at ASU for the ERZ's Ready to Teach Summit. Now, these are high school kids and we had high school, I'm going to list off all the names for all the, all the schools that we had there. These are high school kids who are enrolled in the pre-educator programs. We had students from Walnut Ridge, Truman, Jonesboro, Bifel, Mark Tree, Marvel, Elaine, Wynn, Westside, Nellaton, and West Memphis. All those schools over there in the Delta have, have students in their pre-educator programs. And I shared with them the same, same story I shared and same message I shared with the pre-service educators at Henderson. And that was the focus on the first year of teaching. No matter how much training you've had, how prepared you are, or how little, the first year's hard. Because the true reward of teaching that we get, it's not the paychecks we get at each, each month. It's the full transformation that takes place at the end of the school year. And so the real challenge in that first year to teachers is getting through those challenges as they come up and staying with the game until the end. And, and that's where our real joy comes from and that's what I shared with them. And really to focus on, you're not really in your groove until about year three or year four. But I was really excited to be able to show my story with them. And also rode around the state, made a road trip with Ross White and his crew. Made a trip down to Harmony Grove as well as Hot Springs, Lakeside. And I just want to point out this construction program that Lane Chancellor, Harmony Grove's had. I believe this is year 13 that the program has been in place. And it's changed a little bit in size and scope over the last 13 years. But his construction students have constructed 13 homes over the last 13 years. And these homes are then sold once they're ready. That, those proceeds from those home sales go back into the program so they can fund the next project. And over the last 13 years, students have graduated to go on into the business. Some of them are subcontractors that he's hiring now to, for, to help build the house along with the students. And some of them have gone on to open their own construction businesses around the area. Just a really, really neat model that I'm sure there's a lot more of those around the state that aren't necessarily in the construction business. But it, it's a really cool model for schools to see how they can really grow their own program, just like we should be doing in, in, in education as well. So I'm six months in, just some reflections that have really stood out to me over these first six months. The first of which is the people of Arkansas. Every corner I've been to, you've got a lot of good people in Arkansas. They're very prideful about their communities, really passionate about what's going on in their educations. But also, what's really stood out to me is the people here at DESI. You know, that's something that doesn't get down to ground level, I think, on the teaching or for teachers, is there are so many good peoples right here at DESI. They're working hard every day to improve education. And that's, I've seen that across the state, every corner. I've also seen it right here, here at DESI. So shout out to everybody here at DESI. And rural school challenges, it's the same thing. The challenges are very similar. They might look a little bit different. But teacher retention and recruitment is obviously the, one of the biggest challenges. And in regards to work for, or work-based learning, the lack of industry sometimes is preventing some schools with, coming up with ideas of how to incorporate work-based learning. That's where I'm a big promoter or a, a, a big supporter of and a big pusher of. We've got to build those local partnerships to be able to create those work-based learning opportunities for students. Yes, we might not have a lot of industry, but we've all, we've all got a post office. We've all got a, you know, city hall. We've all got a courthouse. We've all got local government. There can be partnerships built within those systems to really create work-based learning opportunities for students. In the standout schools, Cattle Hills Academy, I've mentioned them several times over the last several months. I really think they're just a role model for the way rural education can, can move. It's really neat what they're doing. And then of course, McGee, you stated earlier, they're facing some of those same challenges, but they're finding a way to grow their students. And looking ahead, next month I'll speak again and magnate to some of our pre-educator students at the Ed Rising State Conference. And then January 17th to the 20th, I'll have the very tough task of attending the College Football Championship Weekend sponsored by CCSSO. So thankful for our partnership with them. They've, I mean, the rewards that they've given us as teachers. This will be our last event, but really looking forward to that. And then February, it's CTE month, a very busy February. It starts with CTE Day at the Capitol here on February the 5th. And one of my goals this next spring is I really focused on southwest Arkansas as well as eastern Arkansas this first six months. Is going to be making a lot of visits to here's central Arkansas as well as up in the northwest Arkansas. But my last thing I want to do is a shout out to one of my students, Luis Serrano. He just recently was sworn in to the Arkansas Guard. We have now hit all three Es in our DQTV program. We've had students enrolled. We've had students go right into employment. And now we've hit the enlistment as well. So congratulations to Luis. Can I ask my report?
Thank you.
That's amazing.
I really think that we have failed as a board to support our Teachers of the Year appropriately. And I think that we should start supporting them better by going with them on some of these, you know, enriching things that they do, like the College Football National Championship.
Would that come out of my travel budget?
Yes.
But I agree. It's amazing to hear. I, I see you as sort of the eyes and ears of education here in Arkansas, getting out to really truly understand. And so it's so helpful to hear your reflections and hear, and also hear the successes.
Thank you.
What's going on. Board members, any further questions or comments? But thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll see you before that comes in January, but looking forward to hearing about that as well. With that, Secretary Eliot.
So I'll keep my comments brief, I think. One of the highlights, I want to thank this board for their participation in, since our last meeting, is engaging in some of the work around the anxious generation. And Dr. Hyde, many of you participated in some big community forums and with support of Governor Sanders and, and her leadership to really address the challenges and tackle on the addictiveness of social media and the impact of smartphones for children primarily before high school. And supporting the work with the pilot program, the over 100 districts that are taking active chances in limiting screen time. I know that's going to have a major impact in, in the quality of education for our students in, across the state of Arkansas. So just really excited to kind of have our last board meeting at the end of this calendar year. I think there's a lot to celebrate and I hope that everybody gets a much well-deserved rested time off and spends some time with their family. And looking forward to January, we'll, we'll be starting session there pretty soon and hitting the ground running. It's going to be a wonderful time. So thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. I echo that for you and your staff, as I know you'll face a very busy January in months to come. So thank you. With that, we do have at least two individuals signed up for public comment. Public comment, we allow a three-minute period. First up, we have Mr. Philip Bryant. He signed up to speak. Thank you for coming in today.
Well, good morning to all and thank you for allowing me to speak. I've written a proposal and ladies, put it on your desk. And I know that the education system in Arkansas is not broken.
If you don't mind pulling the microphone toward you. There you go.
I know that the education system in Arkansas is not broken, but there's always room for improvement on everything. And so I wrote this proposal on reading in the first grade. How it can improve and make sure every student in Arkansas can read first grade material before they ever go to the second. The governor has authorized $3 million to build another prison here in Arkansas. And I know the governor can afford to give another $3 million or more to get this proposal going. And I know that the state of Arkansas can be number one in reading in first, second, third, and fourth grade. It can happen. Because I see in all of you the ability, the desire, and the will to make Arkansas number one in reading. Not only that, I see the power of God within each and every one of you. And we want Arkansas to be number one in something. And it can be number one in elementary reading. So I hope you take this proposal, read it, and don't throw it away. But consider what can be done in Arkansas in education. Thank you. May God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Thank you for coming in today and thank you for providing us with that proposal. We'll certainly...
I left a few copies back here. If anyone out here want to pick up a copy of that proposal, do so, please.
Thank you so much. Next on our list, we have Ashley Hardy. Good morning.
Good morning. Hopefully y'all can hear me this morning. My name is Ashley Hardy and I'm actually the mother of five children. But we're going to talk about this morning, our oldest daughter named Madison. Madison attended Quimman School District from grade six through eighth grade. And unfortunately, a lot of damage was done and we've since had to forcibly move schools. Maddie was a happy and vibrant student, full of life. She was a junior high school cheerleader for three years at Quimman School District. She was a cross-country runner and an AB honor roll student until the 2023 and 2024 school year. Maddie became a victim of bullying and instead of helping, the administration responded and it had only been three months. This behavior allowed Maddie to fall prey to a predator in Quimman School District as she became a shell of herself. And in early 2024, despite warning administrators of an inappropriate relationship occurring between staff and another student to our daughter, administrators instead called the resource officer to escort my husband out of the building. This was not before my husband demanded our daughter was not allowed to be accessed to the counselor. This was documented in emails. This was also documented in our recordings of that day during that incident on Valentine's Day of 2024 this year. Despite our concerns and warnings, the guidance counselor was allowed unlimited access to our child. Though much older predator, who was three years older, for reference, our daughter Maddie at the time was 13 and this predator was 16 years old. Maddie was an eighth grader and this child was an 11th grader. She was allowed instead to gain more access to harm our daughter by being allowed unlimited access as well as counseling, oftentimes conspiring with the counselor to have our daughter come in for counseling sessions multiple times a day. Once the sessions were completed, Maddie was then never protected once more and was never escorted back to class. The predator was then able to gain control and began psychologically abusing our child that ultimately led to our daughter being sexually assaulted while in school. The predator was then able to continue it and despite our parents' concerns, us, me and my husband's concerns, and reports of the sexual assault to Quimman PD, the school did nothing. And that school remained in school last year and is in school today with zero repercussions. Never once was DHS called. In fact, DHS was weaponized against us and DHS was called on our family. When they came out to our home, they closed the case and they weren't sure why Quimman PD and Quimman School District had ultimately called them on our family. We in fact had a call Arkansas Crimes Against Children and we are the ones who filed a report on our daughter's case. After the first sexual assault, our daughter went inpatient for attempted suicide. And unfortunately, after seven days, she was, you know, let out on her way. It's an inpatient stay here in Arkansas. And she went back to Quimman Schools. She was there for six days. And despite our continued warnings by emails, telephone, phone calls, all of which have been recorded and documented, our child Maddie was then sexually assaulted again. From that point, Maddie's mental health has deteriorated so badly that she has gone four additional times to inpatient mental health treatment and was diagnosed with PTSD from her assaults, depression, anxiety, and self-harming behavior. Maddie from early April through the end of school never went back to school because she continued inpatient and mental health. Despite everything being done by us from multiple police reports, calls, and emails, the administration still did nothing. In fact, we were even told we are not allowed to bring our concerns to the Quimman School Board and that it was being handled by any and all administrators. The latest response by the school administrator reads in part, "We have received the mental health records. Let us know when you would like us to enroll Maddie back in school." Out of options and unsure if our child was going to be alive day to day, we reached out to the Department of Education. We were able to present countless emails and phone recordings between us and the administrators and they did find that Quimman Schools was guilty. And they did in fact violate all policies and procedures relating to sexual harassment and sexual assault. It is both alarming and concerning, the lack of accountability by the administrators and the inability to keep students safe. Instead of remedying the situation, we were forced to leave and change schools to protect our remaining children. The Arkansas State Police advised us to protect our other children, that we would have to move them because Quimman Schools refused to protect any of them. In fact, the predator had then tried to go after our second oldest child as well. To date, Maddie has continued her journey to hopefully rec... as well. To date, Maddie has continued her journey to hopefully recover one day, but these acts caused by the direct lack of supervision and inability to keep Maddie and our other children safe, along with all the other children safe at Quipman Schools, have not only dramatically changed her life, but a lot of other children's lives as well. And her life will never be the same. The hope is that very soon, the administrators are held accountable to the highest degree so this never happens to another child or their family ever again. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy, for coming in. I, I have no words. I'm so sorry.
Thank you so much.
And appreciate, and I know it took a lot to come to speak in public. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. Thank you all for hearing me speak. I know a lot of us have been silenced, but we won't continue to be silenced anymore. And I do appreciate the Department of Education finding at least one branch of guilt that, you know, they were found guilty of not following policies and procedures, but that's just a piece of the pie here. The administrators are still there and are still continuing to allow this to happen to many, many other children. So.
Thank you, board members. It has come to my attention that local boards do not always allow public comment. Our board is always open for public comment and I think sometimes we, I personally would like to see that modeled in every district. With that, we will be hearing more.
Thank you.
Soon. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
With that, is there anyone else signed up for public comment? Okay. Board members, any questions or concerns before we close out? It's hard to wait in the meeting. I'm so sorry. But with that, our December board meeting is concluded. Thank you all.